Meeting call to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent quere, moment of reflection.
We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to apply the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notices forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 22, 2024, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, we will have gone to special events applications. Alicia?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There are four, five applications before you this evening. One for a walk and the others are for weddings. Are there any questions?
Right here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe we'll do this in the future, but let's do it tonight. As well as maybe the future. Instead of like doing the presentation and then going to council, why don't we do the council and go to the presentation? That way, the public can ask questions right after the presentation.
So when you matter some council?
You do that. This time, pull that out so the presentation and then questions.
All right, we're now onto matters from city council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
And just good evening, everyone.
Councilmember Chapman.
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Nothing.
You're the man. All right, awesome. That was awesome. Matters from the city manager.
Nothing, thank you.
Matters from the city attorney.
Nothing here as well.
Thank you, Fred.
There you go.
We're now onto presentations. Our Director of Transportation, James Banana, will provide a 2024 transportation update. Take it away, James.
That's good. Thank you. Good evening. My name is James Banana. I'm the Director of Transportation here for the City of Asbury Park. I've been asked to do a quick presentation on our completed, active, and some upcoming proposed projects for the year of 2024. So start with completed projects, things we've completed this year. We have changed the intersection of Prospect Avenue, Monroe Avenue, and Church Street to a four-way stop. We had performed a signal warrant analysis and intersection review with Dynamic Traffic Engineering and found that the levels of traffic and geometry of the intersection didn't really pose well for a traffic signal. So we decided to move to our four-way stop, which fit the warrants for these intersection a little better. We also have some designs for bump outs that we are looking for future funding for. We are going to propose that and talk to the city council about that and see if we can work out a way to increase some bump outs and push the stop bar and crosswalks further towards the intersection to improve sightlines for vehicles down Prospect and either direction. These are designs that were also added by Dynamic Engineering and we are looking to, while we've seen an improvement in safety and collisions already, we're looking to improve that in any way we can. We're going to keep reviewing the four-way stop with traffic counts and collision counts to see how it continues to perform through the summer and through the rest of the year. We have implemented temporary loading zones. We have been seeing issues with trucks who have to drop things off for the businesses downtown. They have been blocking roadways, blocking bike lanes, causing some interesting traffic safety issues of no fault of their own. They really have nowhere to be. So we decided to try a pilot program for temporary loading zones. From 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, the areas outlined in purple, which are located at Bangs Avenue and Emory Street, Cookman Avenue and Bangs Avenue, and Madison Avenue and Bond Street, are designated for a loading zone only. We've seen some success with the truck drivers that we've spoken to. We've surveyed them on the street a few times. Seem to like the space. They say it's safer for them. They like to be out of the street. We are battling some people who are still parking in those spaces, but overall, we're seeing that the one on Bangs and Emory is being used a decent amount by trucks, less so at other locations. But I think this is our largest truck location. And I think so far, we're seeing that it is useful. We've even heard from some business owners that they'd like to see it expanded. But we will keep monitoring this, seeing how it is, you know, how it's performing. We are having problems enforcing the area at this time because we don't really have a backup to do so, but we are just trying to move forward and encourage people to please leave the spaces open and allow the trucks to use them. It's creating a safer situation by our crosswalks. It's creating safer situations in the street for both cars, bicyclists, pedestrians. So we're moving forward with that and seeing if there are other locations that may need them, but more, we're just continuing to monitor the locations that are currently in place. We have launched the new scooter share with VO, launched in May 24 of 2024. We've seen 17,835 trips that are over two minutes in June alone. And of those trips that are over two minutes, 2.32 rides per day, we've had a medium trip distance of one mile. In a city, that's 1.4 square miles. That means that we're seeing a lot of trips that are just from point A to point B, people using to get to their destinations. In addition to that, their meeting minutes per ride are eight minutes. It takes about six to eight minutes to cross town. We're seeing a lot of our trips are being used for utility, being used for transportation, and not for joyrides, which is very good for a program. We've had 41,000 trips total or about, sorry, since the launch of the program. So that's basically June, July, and beginning of August. And we also have, you know, the VO Access Members Program. This program is open to anyone who has or is on governmental aid. And we have nine members right now. They are able to receive severely discounted rates on the scooters. And we've seen, you know, we have nine members, 38 trips total so far. We're working very hard to promote this program and seeing other ways you can get the information out there. We had a significant number of users on the previous program, and we're trying to reach back out to them to see if we can get them on the new program as well. We're seeing the program spread pretty quickly. The new seated scooters are actually more popular than the standing scooters. And I think we've seen actually a little bit of a swing. We see a lot more of older residents and visitors actually on the scooters as well from before, I think, thanks to the sitting scooters. We have been performing traffic studies around the city. We are regularly seeing more speeding and more traffic issues raised around the city, and we're trying to stay on top of that by getting a baseline for how our roads and how our traffic is performing. We've performed studies at Second Avenue at Pine Street, Ridge Avenue at Third Avenue, Ridge Avenue at Avi Place, Summerfield Avenue at Langford Street, Fourth Avenue at Langford Street, and First Avenue at Heck Street so far this year. We have a few more coming up right now, excluding First Avenue at Langford Street. We are targeting areas that are around new development that is coming, as well as areas in the city that we know have high collision rates or high speeding statistics with the police. Basically, this just involves our traffic counter being put out and us reviewing the speeds of the vehicles, as well as the number of vehicles. This is helpful, letting us know which areas are in need of traffic calming or in need of more enforcement, or are just in general not performing well or in a danger for other reasons. We've found that the majority of these areas are, you know, performing pretty well with some speeders, and we're going to work to address those issues with future traffic calming and future projects along the roadway. We've done two striping projects this year so far. We have just begun striping Sunset Avenue between British Street and Memorial Drive, green bike lanes. As you can see on the left of this screen, the before and after, we've completed one side of the street. Tomorrow, the second side of the street will be completed. The green driveways are intended to create a more visual difference between the travel lane and the bicycle lane. This is to further narrow those travel lanes and to provide more safety to the bicyclists in these lanes. We're seeing some speeding coming down the road from Bridge into Memorial Drive, and we believe narrowing visually is going to help constrict that feeling for drivers, slow them down. We're placing green basically everywhere that you have a conflict between bicycles and cars. So through the intersection, we have hashing. At the corners, we have blocks with the bicycle symbol in them. And from each driveway, there are hashes as well in green, so that everywhere we go, we'll see, either for a cyclist or a driver, when you're entering that zone, you'll know, okay, this is an area where bicycles may be, this is an area where cars may be. We've also striped Summerfield Avenue in the same spirit, trying to narrow the roadway, create more narrowing effect and slow vehicles down. We've provided a double yellow line, the length of Summerfield Avenue between Memorial Drive and Prospect Avenue. We've added yellow hashing at all 25-foot corners for no parking, as well as larger crosswalks, more visible crosswalks, and bicycle sharrows. We've replaced the older boardwalk kiosks, the ones that are used for beach passes this year, with newer, more advanced meters that can basically do the transactions in a much simpler way than the previous ones. This is to help all of our people who come to the boardwalk, come to the beach, get their beach passes quicker and more conveniently. We've had small complications with these, but we're going through them and fixing them up as they come along. They're actually working very well right now. It's very quick and easy to get your passes compared to our previous machines, which were often breaking down or confusing for a lot of people to use. We've also repurposed the old kiosks that were on the boardwalk. There were seven of them. And relocated them in areas around the city that didn't previously have kiosks, mostly along Heck Street and Park Avenue, where metered parking was extended two years ago. So now we have areas in the city that are more accessible to parking kiosks and the beach ones that are functioning much, much better. We took an inventory of all our city's street signs. We had responded to a complaint that people were having a hard time navigating the street. And while we were looking into wayfinding, we noticed that there were a lot of streets with missing street signs. So we replaced any old faded or missing street signs, as well as implanted a pole and new signs at every intersection. If you see an intersection that's missing signs, missing a pole, please let us know. There have been some that have been struck by a vehicle or removed for any reason. We're trying to keep up with that. We'd want to make sure that people can find their way around, especially our visitors, so they aren't circling and causing more conflicts with streets and roads, pedestrians As the council knows and a lot of the public know, we also adopted an updated complete streets policy this April. I have begun implementing that policy in the city, and I've begun with our performing an audit of all procedures. Look at the list. Procedures, policies, plans, documents, training programs, and performance measures, as well as other guidance documents. I've begun this with the transportation utility before any other department because I wanted to create a standard or template procedure. There are the departments that I'll have to go through this process with, but basically, I'm going through all the documents, all the policies and procedures that I currently operate under, and making sure that the complete streets policy is adhered to in all those policies, that biking, walking, driving, and all modes of transportation are accounted for in all those policies. Once I've completed that for my department, I plan on doing that for DPW, as well as the police department and possibly one other department, probably planning or zoning if they have a lot of things that are involved in the street. This isn't to go through all their policies throughout their entire department. It's anything that's involving the road, railroad construction, or, you know, transportation in general. I've also started developing an annual report to city council regarding inclusions and exemptions of the new complete streets policy. And every year, at the end of the year, I will be submitting a memo with what has been done as far as complete streets, what complete streets have been implemented, as well as what features have been exempt from certain roads. Sometimes a road, when we do a project, there'll be something in the complete streets handbook or policy that we kind of just can't implement for whatever reason. I'll outline that to you, and I'll tell you why it couldn't be implemented, just so that you're aware of that exception to the new policy. But really, it'll just be a document for you all to see how that policy is being implemented and what's coming becoming of it. I've also updated the complete streets checklist with all the new features from the latest policy, and we are implementing that for every road project that we perform, every grant, any project we are doing. The complete streets checklist first to see what upgrades that roadway needs. The checklist is a document that basically points out, well, it just guides us in just checking each location of the roadway. It asks for pedestrian, ADA, handicap, car, bicycle elements of the roadway and trying to direct us to check all those things. And as we go through that checklist, we notice, oh, you know what? We need this improvement. We need that improvement, or we have this. And it helps us figure out what projects we should do and how our roads should be designed. We were seeing some issues, especially at Sunset Avenue, at Main Street, with vehicles using unoccupied parking lanes and bike lanes to access right turns or left turns or bypass traffic. It was becoming a safety issue with pedestrians in the crosswalk, as well as bicycles on the bicycle lane. And we decided to implement some bollards to kind of block that access. We weren't sure if the bollards would be still standing at this time, but they are. They don't seem to be damaged, and it seems that we have 100% compliance at this time of people not traversing cars in the bicycle lane. So this is something that if we find other areas of the city that are having this issue, we can easily and quickly implement. It did not, it was not a cost to the city of much. It was very simple and evenly in budget. The Asbury Avenue and Ridge Avenue traffic signal, while it was completed last year, we have now completed the process of handing this over to Monmouth County. Currently, all the traffic signals along Asbury Avenue, from Ridge Avenue to Main Street, are Asbury Park's property and are responsible to maintain, even though they are along the county roadway. As we upgrade these signals, we are allowed to give them back to Monmouth County under a certain procedure, and they take all their full maintenance. So we have figured out that policy, we've figured out that procedure, and we have handed this signal off to Monmouth County, and they will continue to maintain it from here on out. We're eager to get some more signals up and ready to go for them. The process was a little labor intensive because there's a lot that Monmouth County wanted in the signals, so we had to adhere to a lot of their regulations. But now that we've completed this project, we kind of have our even template to go through with new traffic signals as we upgrade them. So I'll move to active projects. These are mostly our grant projects and bigger projects that we've been doing. There are a lot of active grants currently. I will go through each one, and I'll try and give you an update of what's going on with each grant, as well as what the grant is. So we have our Asbury Avenue Bike Ways Grant, which is to implement reconstruction of, sorry, not reconstruction, repaving of the roadway, as well as some reconstruction of some sidewalks and some curbing, as well as the implementation of protected bicycle lanes along Asbury Avenue from Main Street to Heck Street. We are hoping that we can award the bid for construction tonight. I believe it's on the agenda for later this evening. And once we get that signed, we can begin construction and hopefully have this done for spring or early summer 2025. We have a Safe Streets to Transit Grant that we're using to upgrade the Bangs Avenue and Prospect Avenue street intersection, including new pavement, new sewers, new sidewalk, new storm drains, curbing, and a whole new signal with pedestrian signaling. This is under construction at the moment. We are hoping, or should we, we are going to be complete with all roadwork and all groundwork before the school year begins, and we will have the signal installed before the end of the fall, probably September or October. We have a Safe Streets to Transit Grant for the Cookman Avenue and Bond Tree intersection as well, so intersection same upgrades, including new sanitary sewers, storm drainage, curbing sidewalk, and select bump outs, as well as pedestrian signaling and a new signal. We just are beginning preliminary construction, preliminary design engineering for this project with Dynamic Traffic Engineering. We are hopeful that we can get it in construction early next year. We have the Safe Roots to School Grant for the traffic calming along Third and Fourth Avenues. We have finally received approval from DOT to enter the final design phase. There are three phases to these grants, preliminary engineering, final design, and construction. Final design is a short period before construction. It is our time to get all of our engineering documents in place. This should only take a month or two. We will have one more public meeting for the public to review the project and see what we're going to do, and then we can get approval to go into construction. We are hoping that we can begin this project, this construction of the product anyway, in the spring of 2025 and have it done relatively quickly. This is a project also for our race intersections, if I didn't say so. We have a Safe Roots to School, we applied for a Safe Roots to School Grant for the FY 2024, for traffic calming along Bangs Avenue, but we were denied. We did not receive it on the grounds that they are still waiting for us to finish our previous one. So we will continue applying for these grants once we have finished our current one. We have a Safe Streets for All Grant. This grant is for the development of a comprehensive transportation safety action plan. I will be working with a consultant to form, or should I say, to review our entire transportation network, including crashes, ADA compliance, sidewalks, curbing, and everything, and finding our, where we're lacking in transportation safety. And this program or this grant will develop a plan for us to take steps to increase our safety and lower the number of serious injuries, fatalities, and overall collisions and accidents in our city. We have the Transportation Alternatives Grant, which is for the Main Street Treescape. We are about to enter, we are waiting for one more permit, actually, from DOT, and then we are going to enter a construction phase for Main Street, for new trees, some bicycle racks and limited benches along from Neptune Border to, do you like Drive? Or to Eighth Avenue, actually, sorry. We should be seeing this completed. It should be, actually, construction should begin in spring with the planting season because we have to wait for the planting season for the trees. But it should not take long at all and should be ready to go before summer of 2025. And we also have a local aid and infrastructure grant, which is for bicycle racks and lockers at the transportation center and along Cookman Avenue, Lake Avenue, and Springwood Avenue around the trees and transportation center. We are going to begin preliminary engineering soon and find locations and the appropriate hardware and bicycle racks for the area. We have, also have our last grant, a few grants, which are all of our municipal aid grants. These are our major road projects. Our, you know, our FY 19, fiscal year 19 project is our reconstruction Memorial Drive. We, Memorial Drive is completed with new sewers, new storm drains, new pavement, new curbing, new sidewalk. The two traffic signals, there will be traffic signal at Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue now, are to be installed in the next month, and the final pavement should be finished after, see here now, this September. We should have the whole product finished before October, including the new striping, which is going to involve protected bicycle lanes on either side of the roadway. Our fiscal year 2021 grant is Monroe Avenue and Comstock Street, which are currently under construction. I think Comstock, the sanitary sewer's been completed, and they're working on the storm drains and sidewalks and curbs right now. And then once they finish that, they'll move to Monroe. These will both be completed before the end of the year this year, with final paving hopefully taking place in October. Our fiscal year 2022 grant is reconstruction of Eighth Avenue. Similarly, reconstruction of all pavement, curbing, sidewalk, sewer, and storm drains from full length of Eighth Avenue, so Kingsley Street to, I guess that's Main Street, Do You Like Drive. It has been completed with the exception of final paving. Final paving will be taking place after, see here now, to avoid any issues with parking during the summer period. But we expect that to be done early October, and we completely have a new, nice roadway. Fiscal year 2023 is First Avenue. So we will be reconstructing the pavement, select sidewalks, select curbing, and the sewer and storm drains along First Avenue from Memorial Drive to, I guess, Central Avenue. We just began preliminary engineering for this project with T and M Associates. We will hopefully be ready and ready for construction at the end of late next year. So it's probably, construction is will probably begin in 2026, beginning in 2026. Fiscal year 2024, we have a reconstruction of Second Avenue and Third Avenue between Grand and Berg. This is also new pavement, select curbs, select sidewalk, new sewer and storm drain in that area. We are hopeful to begin, we haven't begun preliminary engineering just yet. We're hopeful to have a similar timeline with First Avenue and be able to kind of begin construction in 2026. We also applied for a grant this year, for an FY 2025 grant, for the repaving of Langford Street between Prospect Avenue and Asbury Avenue. It's still pending. We're waiting to hear back if we got the grant. And of course, we have to review finances to make sure that we can perform the project, but it would really be just for a repaving of the roadway. We also applied for a Transit Village Grant. The canopies at the transportation center are aging pretty rapidly, and we are, we applied for a grant to refurbish these canopies along the rail platform, as well as the bus station. We are still waiting to hear back if this is a grant that we received as well. Both of these pending grants will be reviewed once they are awarded or not to see if we can get them done, but we believe we can. The Raze Grant, so we partnered with Monmouth County to provide, to submit, I should say, a Raze Grant. This is a federal grant in two steps. The first step is developing a plan for improvements along Asbury Avenue for the full length. That means from the circle from 35 to the ocean. This would be a review of the entire roadway, all its infrastructure, and how it could be upgraded. And it rolls into a second application for an implementation and construction grant after it's completed. We applied once already, and we did not receive it, but they called us and asked us to apply again. So we are hopeful that we will receive it this year, and once we complete this project, we can apply for the construction and implementation grant in probably two years' time. We have launched the Easy Ride for Life Asbury Park Program. This is a program based for seniors and eligible income residents to get cheap, easy rides to areas in and around Asbury Park. We found that, we only have 11 program members for a total of 38 trips since its launch in December. We found that Monmouth County launched their own program with this, and theirs is free, and ours costs a little bit of money. So we've kind of lost a few participants. So we're going to review how our program could better play with Monmouth County's program and see if we can build a better program that's going to be more interesting and easier to use for our residents. But overall, we've had a lot of feedback with the residents that have been using the program. I see most of the trips they've been using actually are for medical, grocery shopping, and limited shopping. So it's definitely something that's being used, and definitely something that's being used for the right purposes and for helping people get around and do their thing. We are also performing traffic intersection reviews with Dynamic Traffic Engineering. We are currently doing one at Do You Like Drive and Kingsley Street to review the, what's the proper and most effective traffic control device at the intersection, as well as anything that can increase pedestrian and car safety. We have collected traffic counts, but we're now working through collecting crash data and reviewing that before we complete the signal warrant analyses. We have reviewed the Springwood Avenue and Ridge Avenue intersection and developed a traffic signal upgrade plan. This is not engineering. This is simply a plan for when we can apply for grants and say, we have this plan to go. This is how we're going to improve the intersection. This is how we're going to improve the signal. It helps us get grants and helps us move through grants faster. We've also done this for Lake Avenue and Bond Street, which we explored differing kind of ways of fixing the traffic pattern, including roundabouts, including bump outs. Some are more feasible than others, but we have to review those and see which one's the best operational wise. We also have the Lake Avenue and Emory Street. Their signal there is pretty outdated. It's a large intersection. We reviewed some pretty large bump outs to see if we can make it a little safer for pedestrians. Those reports are becoming available and will be made available to the council at whatever you'd like. And also, we are looking at Kingsley Street at Fifth Avenue and Sunset Avenues to see if there are any traffic control measures that are needed to take place there. They're currently the only area of the Kingsley Street that are really not stop controlled with a trigger signal or anything. And we were just looking to see if we can control it next to the parks, next to the waterfront, to see if there's any safety issues or ways we can improve the situation down there. We have some pending projects, things that I am interested in implementing, things I think will be helpful for our transportation network that I'm bringing to the council for you all to review, for us to have, to begin our discussion internally. The first of which is temporary bump outs. We've seen bump outs be helpful with pedestrian crossings. It shortens the, it narrows the roadway, shortening the crossing pedestrians, giving them, they can get across quicker and safer, as well as creating something for cars to navigate, so they have to make tighter, slower turns, as well as slow down at the intersections. I believe we can do these on a temporary basis with bollards and paint to see the effect of them and see how effective they are before we implement them, you know, for any construction purposes. Ridge Avenue and Third Avenue is an intersection that has some odd geometry and has a lot of collisions. I think this would be a strategy that would allow cars better visibility and also slow them down and give them safer turning options. We would, I have, I think I've given you all a memo about that. I'll see if we can, if that's something we can do and something that's we're interested in doing. But I think doing this would help us understand what areas are really in need or really affected by bump outs. We can easily do a traffic count before and after or during to determine the effect of speed and volume. Roundabouts, we had discussed roundabouts in the past, so I had Dynamic Traffic Engineering develop one out of paint bollards that we could temporarily try. You know, one of our biggest concerns from the public and from the city council when we were trying to do bump outs was, it was only paint, and cars could drive over it and ignore it. So we're trying to find ways that we can make it visible, make it, you know, something they have to navigate. Using bollards and paint, I think we can create something that cars will have to follow through, will slow traffic down, make it safer, make it safer, that even trucks can still navigate. There are even opportunities out there, companies like Vortex, who provide these large rubber installations, kind of similar to the speed bumps we use. They're bolted down with bolts, and they are easily driven over. They don't really break or anything like that, and they can be navigated by large trucks if they have to pass. if they have to pass over them, but it's a physical barrier for cars to go around. There, it's not overly expensive. It's something that we can put in, put out. It's something we can try and see if it works with traffic counts. We also have the Cookman Avenue and Asbury Avenue bike lane. I have brought this up before and I felt like bringing it back because it was advantageous because a recent news article came out with some more editorial information or data from Rutgers. I believe, wrote it down. Yeah, so the presence of the designated bicycle lane in this area decreased average maximum speed of vehicles by 28% and reduced the average speeds of vehicles making right turns by 21%. Reduced the average overall vehicle speed going straight by 8%. It's a piece of infrastructure that I think creates a safe space for bicycles to make right turns. It cuts out the illegal right turns that are currently happening for motor vehicles and it also slows traffic down, probably them, making them take a wider, or actually more tighter, slower turn and more, you know, more visual friction for them. It's something I think we should explore even if we continue with a little temporary paint, but just wanted to begin the construction, construction conversation on that. Finally, we have a number of driver feedback signs around the city. There's two on Sunset Avenue, two on Asbury Avenue, two on Bangs Avenue. They are having power issues. The Bangs Avenue ones still work fine, but we're having issues keeping the other four operational. I'm going to go through a project with my staff as well as the city electrician to try and get them operational with the company. They don't offer direct tech support where they come out and fix them for you, so we're kind of on our own with their information, but I want to get them up and running. I think it's more of an issue with the solar panels than it is with the hardware. We have replaced the batteries in the past and gotten them working, but in time the batteries have more issues. So I think we know what the problem is and we're just trying to find a solution, but we are determined to get them up and running. Those are all the pending projects I have at the moment. The one thing I did want to add to my presentation, I didn't get a chance to, is that we did receive, the city of Asbury Park did receive a gold award for Safe Roots to School this year from Easy Ride and from the NJ DOT. This is an award that helps us apply for Safe Roots to School grants. It's basically evaluated on the city's efforts to increase safety and transportation around schools, our efforts with our crossing guards, as well as our new updated complete treats policy will factor into that. But that is the conclusion of my current active and pending projects. City Council, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
I just have one. Some of the feedback I get is that the crosswalks on Cookman at both Bond and Emery are difficult to maneuver because the traffic signals are kind of skewed a little bit to the side. So there's not really any, it's hard to see the traffic lights and there's no crosswalk lights. So that's some feedback I've gotten.
Okay, so the Bond Avenue intersection, that's part of our-
Cookman at Bond and Cookman at, at Emery.
Yeah, so we're upgrading the Cookman and Bond one, so it'll have the pedestrian signs. It'll definitely be way more visible. The Emery intersection is definitely one where we're keeping our eye on. It's definitely outdated and needs upgrades as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
James, for those, is that the trees are blocking the sun? Is that what's making, is that what you think is making them not work?
I think it's the part of the problem. The batteries are, we're finding them exploded out. So I think it's more of an issue with the power being drained from the batteries and then freezing to expand. So it's probably be part of the problem, but I don't think that's the main culprit.
Okay. And then the loading zone down on, down by Bangs, and I don't know that you can do this, but people don't, I think people are still confused by the purple. Like is there, can we just stencil in loading from nine, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM so people then know after that they could in theory, or whatever the hours for the loading zone are, I don't know off the top of my head. So just, I'm putting that on your radar, think about it. It's not emergent, just the purple's not common for people, like yellow's common or whatever. And then the only other thing, this was a wonderful presentation, really the only piece of information I'm going to ask is it would help me if you just occasionally put in like pricing, like I know the pricing of painting the bike lanes on Sunset, like I know that's very expensive, like so it just might help people to understand when we're budgeting for these projects, this is 500,000, this is 1.5 million.
Sure.
Yep, just in the future when you, you do it. But other than that, I thought it was great.
Okay.
That's it from us, so.
All right then.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record and there will be a three minute time limit for each speaker. Again, your name and address, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nina. I'm living, I reside at 1101 Bangs and I do have a question not only for transportation, but for the city manager and the council. I've lived on that corner for the last 30 plus years and this is the first summer that I've had that I can't go outside and enjoy my weather. And I'd like to know how much longer do I have to endure and suffer through this construction? Because now my corner is now a dumping ground. Anything that they cut up on Prospect, anything they cut up on Monroe, Summerfield comes on my corner and it's still out there today. You look out my front window and there's a big old dump truck. You look on the left side, on Comstock side, and a pile of cement bricks that came from around the corner. Why is that? Why hasn't it been picked up as it's being ripped up off the street? And why do I have to suffer a whole summer of not being able to enjoy sitting on my porch? Can't sit outside during the daytime when they're out there. I'm on oxygen. I have COPD. I can't inhale the dirt and I can't inhale the diesel trucks. I've been inconvenienced in that neighborhood since June when they started, between losing water for two days and not, and being evacuated at one point for a gas leak where I almost ended up in the hospital. So I'd like to know how much longer do I have to endure this in my neighborhood? And you're talking about going into other areas and doing the exact same thing? You need to really go into the community and speak to the residents that live there and find out how inconvenienced they've been since this project started.
I'm gonna take it away from James for a second. I totally agree with you, Nina. We've talked about this where your street has been the corner from hell with how many times they've opened it up, closed it up for water, for gas, for everything else and everything. But I think the question shouldn't be addressed to James. It should be a question to the city manager, assistant city manager. They should get in touch with T and M who's supervising this job and the contractor first thing in the morning and try to get this resolved as soon as possible because Nina's right and I've been there every time and they dumped the remnants from other streets on her block. So it's totally unacceptable, so it's, but it's something we have to address with T and M and the contractor.
Yep. Well, I will look into this first thing tomorrow morning and I will be in touch with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And part of, part of the thing when we had the, they broke the water pipe and so we had to pay to fix it and have sewer route out there. We're back charging the water, the water company to reimburse us for that bill. And same with the gas leak, you know, obviously that wasn't done by the city, it was done by a contractor and they're picking up all costs for that, but that didn't help inconvenience you and make you send an ambulance for 12 hours. So again, I apologize for that. Wasn't done on purpose, but it happened and there were markouts, so it should not have happened. Thank you, Nina. Yes, sir.
How you doing? My name is Larry Sims. I have a rental property on 602 Comstock. They're, they're doing the construction for the sewer lines and I want to, you know, make a stay. I done put a lot of, a lot of money for the, you know, plumbers to come out, but they did a good job for the, you know, putting the drains in now. And I want to recommend, you know, he, he did Keith Muller for, for the engineer and he, you know, he's on it. He's doing a good job for doing the work out there. You know, it's just, you know, a lot of money is being the taxes. We pay a lot of taxes in this town and my grandmother owns a house on Bangs Avenue, 921 Bangs. So, you know, I, I mean, you know, we, we come across these tracks, tracks of time, the track, I don't even want to drive to park my truck on the, on, in the, on the, on the, my lot because the tracks is bad here. You know, you got a lot, it's a lot of tax money here and, and, you know, things need to be addressed and I understand it has to be a project, you know, one project at a time, but we need to just try to tighten up on it, you know? And like, you know, my, I can remember my grandmother telling me it was time that she couldn't even come down here. So, you know, when, when, when I was, I wasn't even born, but, you know, that's, that's, that's the past tense, you know, we, we moved forward, you know?
Thank you. And again, if there's something wrong, there's a city portal, you can go to our website and lodge a complaint. You should get responsible within 24 hours and if not, you can call the administration. But you see something wrong, something's going wrong, please.
Yeah, we say so.
Call, call right away. Don't wait for a council meeting, just call right away. That way we can fix it as quick as possible. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to all. Basically what I want to say is we need help on this-
Name and address, sir.
My name is Peter Plants for Pine Tree Lane in Alpen, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm talking about the rent leveling program. We're just 27 multifamily homes that have three or more tenants and, and we've been penalized. We allowed, we are allowed to increase our tenant rent at 3.5%. This year, my taxes went up 40% from $10,000 to $14,000. That's 40%, technically 39.6. Well, basically, while, while you and the state sleep with all these companies that build townhouses and give them all abatements and they're selling for eight, $900,000 a piece, will my taxes go down next year? I don't think so. What we need here is, we need some sort of balance. I need your help and I need some balance. Where are my advocates? The dollar store is no longer. It's a buck and a quarter, a buck 75. The cost of living has doubled and tripled. I mean, that's not rocket science. We're all living it. You can't get a handyman for less than $400. So at 3.5%, it's not counting it for the homeowners. Also, water heaters years ago were $700. I had to put a water heater in my house. Cost me $1,600 for the water heater without even being put in for the labor. Here's another joke. I went to church the other day. I lit three candles, one for me, my girlfriend and her 88-year-old mother. It cost me $3 a piece for candles to light. That's, we need to abolish this 3.5% increase on the rents. I mean, it's, I don't understand. I mean, I'm here 16 years. I invested in, in this city. These companies come in and you kind of got what you wanted because you're building the place up, millions of dollars here, 900,000 there. Here's the other thing, when I'm ready to retire, who would be interested in purchasing my property because of this situation? I want to be able to afford and upkeep my house. It's not about Democrats. It's not about Republicans. It's about common sense. We, we kindly request a minimum adjustment of 10% increase of rents as soon as possible to compensate for the 40% increase of at least my taxes and I'm sure everybody else's taxes went up too, 40%. And you're telling me that I can only increase 3.5%? It's not rocket science. We need help here. We really do. I thank you for your time and have a safe evening.
And I, I thank you and I apologize you couldn't speak at the last meeting and I did follow up and asked the administration to make sure somebody reached out to you and I was told, I apologize for my grammar, that everything was fine and you were jolly bawdy. So obviously I was not told the truth. So I wanted to be prepared tonight to answer your questions. And I was told you would talk to Veronica and talk to Elton and everything and everything was-
They know me, they know me very well, like you apologize nicely.
And I was told like you were happy. Obviously you're not happy, so I apologize for, I got the wrong information. Did you ask, you know, there is, there is a rent control board that does meet monthly and you can go there and you can make an application for a hardship increase more than the 3.5%. Especially if you were like, say, a good landlord that hadn't increased the rents for years and you're going to get it. So there is a way to get more than 3.5%.
I understand that, but listen, it, it's not rocket science. It's 40%. You're telling me I can't get a 10% increase to my tenants? And to be honest with you, most of my tenants have won me for five, six years. So you don't want to be throwing people out and I'm pretty fair with my rents. You already know how much I get every year from my, from my building.
I don't know anything.
Well.
Whomever.
Okay. The rent leveling, the rent leveling, they knows, they know every penny I get. So why do I need to do a hardship? Isn't that a hardship already? 40%? 3.5%? Who are my advocates? I'd like to know. I really would.
I would suggest you apply for the hardship.
So you're kind of passing the buck then?
No, I'm, I'm not going to sit here and fib to you and say like, yes, we're going to change it so everybody in the city can raise rents 10%.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying this right now, but like I said, it's not rocket science. 3.5% increase and a 40% increase. There's a little gap there. So if I were to ask for 10% more on the rent, would I be a bad guy?
No, I think you should do that in the hardship period.
Okay.
So Peter, just to follow up on that, you and I spoke and I went back then and spoke with the city manager and assistant city manager. There's an ordinance in place that caps it at the 3.5, so that ordinance is in place and the best way for you to get through this issue is to go to the rent leveling board, that's why they're there, and put in this hardship application to be able to raise the rent based on your increase in taxes.
But isn't that the council's job? You still made a 3.5, right, the council?
Correct.
But we just can't randomly just change it right now. There's an ordinance in place and there's policies in place to support that ordinance and there's avenues for you to go and make applications based on these, these expenses.
Is there a process that you are willing to look at in a timeframe to raise it from 3.5?
So we actually review this ordinance, I'm going to say once a year, we have conversations about this ordinance, you know, just based on the feedback that we get.
That would be, what, what kind of a year that it's coming out of?
As we start to hear feedback, we have different conversations and bring in some of our professionals and some of the department heads and just have these conversations. But for you, for right now, your best bet is to reach out to the rent leveling board.
And thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Madriano. I live at 1606 Sewell Avenue. Just wanted to thank you for your presentation. I have three questions. The first question is, how many trucks use the Cookman Avenue loading or the Bangs Avenue loading or any of them? Two, how many human or pet fatalities have happened on Third, Fourth, Fifth and Sunset this year? And my third question is, how many trucks and how many fatalities does it take for my neighborhood to end up in your slides?
I won't have the data for either of those loading trucks at Bangs Avenue or those bases for burger accidents. That's all probably in the police's report and the police. And there's no number that we're looking for.
I understand you're, you're, you have the issue with trucks on Sewell Avenue and Ridge, correct?
Yep.
Yeah. I saw your email the other day. Appreciate you reaching out. I have not seen the video, no.
I have to take a look at the video.
Okay.
I can play it for you if you'd like.
To answer your question, there's nothing that's, we're looking for, no number, no magic number. We're all concerned about all accidents and all collisions.
Sure. I'd just like to ask you to think about putting my neighborhood in your slides sometime.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Hello. Oh. Oh, I got him. Okay.
Okay. Uh, hello, I'm Kathleen Muma, Sunset Avenue. Thank you, James, for your presentation. Um, I have a lot of questions, so I'll just, should I ask them all at once? And a couple of comments. So my questions start, you mentioned the traffic studies. I wonder if we can see those results? Um, I wondered where we can find the complete streets checklist? Um, I wondered about if green infrastructure is being considered in any of the roadway improvement projects? Um, we need green infrastructure. It helps calm, uh, traffic as well as manage stormwater. At the same time, there's a lot of good ideas out there about them. Uh, my next question is, can we see the plans for the Asbury Avenue bike lane improvements? Another question is, you said a three-phase project process, but I wondered if you could repeat the, the phases? Um, for the Safe Streets for All grant where you're going to work with a consultant, will, will there be a chance for public input? And then I just had a few comments too. Um, thank you for starting to paint the lanes on Sunset Avenue. I think it looks good so far. Um, a few feedbacks I have are, I, it would be great to see the green paint the full way of the lane. I understand it's a budgetary issue, but would like to support that. It would be great to see the number of green bike lanes in town expand. Um, so it creates more of a network. Um, and also there's a spot near the bridge, like where the Asbury border ends. It would be great to have green paint near those borders. Um, because that's an area where you get, if you're on a bike, you get like squished by the traffic and the road curves a certain way. So if a car is speeding, like it, it, you feel the, the narrowness there. Um, and then I just want to say three things that I and I think other people would like to see in roadway improvements. Our green infrastructure, which I already mentioned. We want to see traffic calming. We want our neighborhoods to be safe and accessible by bikes, scooters, walkers, cars, children, elderly people, people with disabilities, everybody. Um, and also we'd like to see a chance for public input for these plans. A lot of people have like institutional knowledge, like Nina has lived in her block for decades. She, you know, asking for public input before these projects start, I think is crucial because you'll get knowledge that you wouldn't have just from looking at a map or an engineer's report.
Kathleen, um, to, to start, the area that you're asking for on Sunset Avenue by the bridge, is that the area by the restaurant?
Yeah, by the restaurant. Probably a little on the other side too, but it's more so when you're, when you're heading westbound by the restaurant. The, the way the road curves.
Yeah, it narrows.
The car going, it narrows. So a green spot, a green...
I'll see what we can do. It, it was a concern with the narrowing and, and parking situation. So I'll see what we can do for that. Uh, so just a, uh, one thing I apologize, I did forget to mention. As part of the Complete Streets update, uh, policy, um, there is a, a, a trigger to start doing a more public process for projects. I'm trying to figure out exactly what that looks like, but I, I would like to have public input for, for every project we're doing. Um, I don't know if it's going to be before we apply or after we receive the project. I kind of have to figure out how I want to run that. But yes, I do want more public input. I do want to speak with the public and see how it feels about how their road is going, what they think will be improvements, and for, for suggestions to those green infrastructure updates. Um, we haven't really explored too much green infrastructure yet, but there were emails this week, I know. Um, and I spoke with Michelle already. I'm going to be joining the green team in September for a meeting to talk about, uh, green infrastructure. What you'd like to see, what I can do, what we can put out. I'm also going to be taking a walk with Eileen Chapman and, uh, check out some areas along some of our current grant projects, probably First Avenue, Second Avenue, and Third Avenue, um, to see what we can incorporate, uh, into our current active grants. Um, the checklist isn't avail, is not available online right now, but we can of course share it with you. Um, maybe I can add a, uh, Complete Streets, um, page with some information on the webpage. But if you email me, I'll, I'll happily share the checklist with you. Um, the Asbury Avenue bikeway improvements, I don't have them with me. I can share them, but the easiest thing to do is to look at Asbury Avenue between Heck Street and Grand Avenue. The traffic pattern is in place there. The protected bike lane on either side of the street is what we'll be stretching all the way to Main Street. Yeah. The, uh, you also asked, oh, the grant process. Um, so grants from DOT and from the state, there's three major steps. There's preliminary engineering, there's final design engineering, and then there's construction. And since this is money coming from the state, we have to meet up all of their requirements and all of their kind of checklist and things like that. So we go through, you know, preliminary engineering is when we do a lot of the main stuff. We might do a public meeting. We, we go out to the area, we see what we're going to do. We start the engineering plans, we start the preliminary plans, get the project into what we're going to do. And then we take all that specific information and we give it to DOT. We wait for their approval, which sometimes takes a while. Um, they give us a lot of feedback, make us change some certain things. I'll see when it comes near their roadways or their property, there's permits that we have to get. Uh, but once they give us approval, we enter our final design phase, which was what we're entering for our traffic calming on the Third, Second, uh, Third and Fourth Avenues. This is the process where we finalize our plans, literally, uh, in a sense of engineering. This is the measurement, the actual measurements. This is the actual, um, what we're going to do here, there, 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 there. We get our permits, um, all of them from transit and DOT, whoever else we need, city permits. And we have all that lined up, ready to go. A lot of times there's a, a last public meeting as well. And we go DOT again. We have their approval on all those things. More demands, more changes, whatever else. We finally get approval to go to construction. We go out to bid and then pay for the actual construction. That's the process. Uh, there's big gaps in between with DOT approvals and changes sometimes, which is unfortunate. Um, and to your last question, the Safe Streets for All, there will be a, a very large portion of that's public input. When it comes to developing plans especially, they rely a lot on public input, typically more than construction projects. But I am interested in increasing the amount of public input on construction projects as well.
Hi, James. Kathleen, I'm at 1115 Fourth Avenue. I've got some questions. I'm not going to ask all of them. I'm going to set up time with you and you and I can go over your, your, your data. Um, I definitely echo everything, Kathy, was it? Kathleen, okay. Echo everything that has been said so far. Definitely need the data. We have to have data in order to figure out where we're headed. Um, do you have problems and goal statements set up? Or do you want me to keep asking?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Problem and goal statements. Where is your project charter? All of that needs to be posted online for transparency purposes. Um, specifically the project plan. Because you've got a lot of projects here and I do project management for a living, so I'd be happy to, to help you, give you some guidance, whatever. But if you don't have those, I'd be happy to help. Definitely need the public input. How are we coming along with Fourth Avenue in terms of the traffic calming measures? Because when you talked about the roundabout and that material, it's highly ineffective. Because I live on Fourth and that's all we hear all day long. And you know what? I talked to the traffic cops, all four of them. You know what they say? People blow right through those. Those things are ineffective. So you've got your own traffic police echoing that they're ineffective. So, um, problem, goal statement, collision data. Definitely want to see how often, um, I would like to see the collision rate and, and that data tracked over time. And then I guess my last question is, what is your particular turnaround time for responding to emails? Because I did send you several emails. I tagged you in the email, I highlighted your name, and that was over probably two months ago and I still haven't gotten a response from you. So I'll let you, you take it from there.
Sure. So I forgot to add Kathleen's comment also. I do have a lot of the, the highlights from those traffic studies that I can give you in a moment as well. Um, and of course, you can always ask me for them, I'll give you the, the information. Posting online as well as the comment for, for turnaround for emails, I try my best. But I am, I'm only one person in the department. I don't have someone to help me. And if I, if I'm not in the office for a reason, I get pushed back, things, you know, get backed up a lot. I have, I have, currently have 12 voicemails and probably 20 emails that I'm waiting to get through. 12 is the work I'm doing. So I apologize for that. I do my best and I'll try to be better about responding to emails. Um, two months is too long. I, I must have fallen through the cracks with that one and I apologize. So I'll take a look, please forward to me again if you can.
I will. And you know what? I appreciate your accountability. So whenever, as a leader, whenever I mess up, you're going to hear it from me first. Because everyone smells, when people don't own, own accountability, it comes across as BS and everyone can smell it. So thank you, I appreciate that. That, that's good leadership. So keep going.
Um, the speed bumps, yeah, they don't, they don't work. I, I try my best not to implement any speed bumps in the city. The cars hit them, they go over them, it makes noise, makes vibrations, they don't really slow down. Uh, if there is any factor of slowdown, it's only at the speed bump. So I don't personally like implementing speed bumps. The material for the roundabout that I was talking about, I was just saying that it's the same material. And if you have an option not to go over the speed bump, you're probably going to take it. So you go around it like that. So it's just a more raised feeling to roundabout. Not necessarily speed bump the same way. Um, posting online, I can see by making more things available online, um, things change a lot, especially in the grant process, especially when it goes to DOT. It's hard to keep up with that, especially being one person. Um, posting online over and over again, uh, it's, it's decent amount of work. I could see about what I can do, how I can get a page up. We have the, uh, ongoing construction page. Maybe I can post more information on that, uh, or keep them a little more up to date to where we are in the projects. Like I said, it's, it's hard to post, um, very specific things because there are a lot of times that things change in a project and I, I want to avoid false information floating around because it changed. But we can, we can definitely, uh, explore that. Collision data and traffic data, I don't have that. I have, um, there's some, there's some programs through like NGDOT called Safety Voyager where I can see the highlights of that crash data that I have access to. But I don't have the ability to share a lot of that. I mean, we can look at it together, um, but for actual reports, you have to go to the police. Even I have to go through the police. So I, I don't have that to share.
The, the, I think the sheriff's office has it, or Monmouth County Sheriff's Office. I've already inquired. So that, that's where that data is located.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, my time. And you said a problem and goal statement? You're asking me what my problems and goal statement is or, or like?
Do you have them? Do you have them written out? So for every project, when you run the projects, you have to have a project, uh, management tool, which includes a timeline. You have to definitively, there's five elements to a prob, problem statement. And then there's about four elements to a goal statement. And then you track to that, your, your project plan. But when you and I meet, I've got excellent project management tools. I can share them with you and I'd be happy to, to help you with that.
Sure. So we don't, we, all our grants have to have schedules, have to have, uh, scopes of work, things like that. Not to the extent that you're talking about, we're not as, as organized as you're talking about. But they do exist in that form where we have an end product we're going towards. Uh, you know, the, the goal of, you know, improve this, improve that, increase safety, bump out whatever infrastructure we're talking about, as well as the product schedule of how many months things should take. We, we do have things like that. And we also operate, and I could, I don't know about, I could see how I can make this available as well. But we do have, uh, what we follow is a spreadsheet of roadway conditions, um, as far as roadway work goes. Obviously, um, the traffic calming and things like that are more off of our data that we collect. But the road conditions, we have a list that we go down and try to knock off the top ones as best as possible. Depending on if there's anything else going in the area, we might jump down a number, but pretty much we always go for the top. That's why we applied for, uh, for pavement of Langford Street. It was the next, uh, road on our list for the worst pavement in the city. So we can, I can show that. I don't know about sharing it because it changes, but we can talk. Um, and I think you, oh, and if I can run through a few things for the traffic studies. Um, I grabbed some, some overall data just to, to share it. So Second Avenue and Pine Street, there was an average of 1,540 vehicles per day. 23% of vehicles speeding over 25 miles per hour with 4.5 vehicles over 30 miles per hour. That's kind of how I organize them, just for talking about them. So I'll run through them. Ridge Avenue and Third Avenue, 2,000 vehicles per day. 14% of vehicles speeding over 25. 1.8% of vehicles speeding over 30. Ridge Avenue at Ivy, 1,177 vehicles per day. 13% of vehicles speeding over 25. 0.73% of vehicles over 30 miles per hour. Summerfield Avenue at Langford Street averages 1,926 vehicles per day. 12.5% vehicles speeding over 25 miles per hour. 2.32% of vehicles speeding over 30 miles per hour. Fourth Avenue at Langford Street, there were four total counts taken, averaging 5,200 vehicles per day with 66% of vehicles speeding over 25 miles per hour and 22% of vehicles speeding over 30 miles per hour. First Avenue at Heck Street was averaging 1,879 vehicles per day. 9.21 vehicles speeding over 25 and 1.05% of vehicles traveling over 30 miles per hour. And I, obviously from this data, it's also why we're focusing on Fourth Avenue and Third Avenue for traffic calming as those who had the highest numbers so far from our traffic counts.
And then what, what, I just, and I'll, I don't want to hog the, the time, but, um, timeline. But when, when, when am I going to see things happening on Fourth Avenue?
Oh, for that project? So we're entering final design?
Sunset's happening. Why, when's Fourth?
Yeah, so it's, it's just, it's painting, it's different. This is a part of a grant process. We're entering final design. We have agreement with our engineer, we're moving forward final design. We're going to have a more public meeting, uh, probably September. We're going to be probably at a final design in October to January, depending on when we get our approval from DOT. We plan on starting the construction in spring, at worst, early summer 2025.
Can we, can the public have a conversation prior to you making decisions with whoever the, the engineer is? Let us be involved. Are you open to that?
Well, there's a public meeting.
Okay, but before you make decisions, is that what I'm hearing?
So, I mean, just in general, or maybe this project particularly?
Around, let's, let's say specifically around Fourth. So you're, you're going to execute on this. Are we, are we going to be able to weigh in before decisions are made, is my question?
So you've had, I think there's been two very, two or three very active public meetings for this project already. That's why we changed it from roundabouts to raised intersections. So there's been a lot of public input on this project.
Okay.
Um, we are now in the process of the stage where we can't change too much, other than little things. Uh, so there's not much that's going to change about the project. What you saw at the previous meeting is the vast majority of what you're going to see in this next meeting. There's, and when you enter final design, there aren't that many changes that can be made. But for future projects, we're going to be including more public, uh, input, more information and trying to get you more in the process than you have been in the past.
All right, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Eric Galoppo, 908 Fifth Avenue, Asbury Park. Thanks for your presentation, James, and thank you for Suzy Council for making this happen this evening. Um, I'm going to echo a lot of the sentiments that have been, um, mentioned by folks here. And, you know, I am, uh, an urban planner. You probably have heard me say this before. I have similar qualifications to James with a sub-specialty in street design, complete streets and public space design. And unfortunately, what I see in our presentation is a policy and a vision that is overly focused on cars. James, I'm not blaming you for this, but it is the outcome of a lack of vision that brings together the multiple parts of our streets that should be integrated together, including green infrastructure, including environmental quality for people who have, uh, trouble breathing or just old people, safety for children, arts and culture, public space design, safety. In this presentation, there was actually only the word pedestrian mentioned twice. And that's not because it's not in there, but it doesn't start there. And so when we think about how streets are designed, we have to think about the big picture. And what I see is that we're in the forest for the trees. We've been asking for bump outs and raised crosswalks and safety for years, years. And we have seen very little progress on that front, I'm sorry to say. My husband was struck by a car in a bike lane on Fourth Avenue that then drove away. That person was later, you know, absconded and was later found and brought to justice over it. But that's the kind of reality we are living in. When we talk about people who are experiencing hardships or perceived hardships because of the level of development in town, all of the traffic calming that is being put into place now is only considering existing conditions. We have not integrated all of the new developments, the many multiple units that are being developed in the redevelopment areas in different areas of the city I won't mention. And then there's public participation. It is unfortunate that we are expected to absorb a very dense and detailed presentation that you've provided and respond to it minutes later and given only three minutes. The process may be transparent, it is not engaged. We have a plan for walking and biking. It was not mentioned one time. We have a master plan that indicates the many ways that our streets should interact with the people who live in the city. It was not mentioned one time. And all of the people who are here want to be involved and we have repeatedly asked to be involved. And then to hear through the grapevine the ways that we're referred to is really disheartening. And so I think that there just has to be a zoom out and start to involve people more and we would have a better solution and a more comprehensive solution. I don't really have any questions because there's too many.
Eric, I can just say to you, um, there's a lot of the projects that we do are from the planning, planning biking, walking project like Asbury Avenue and even the Third and Ridge or roundabout, bump out, stuff like that.
I'm encouraged to couch this in the progress that's being made on the documents that have been put forth by community involved.
I use them every day.
Hi, good evening, everybody, Polly Shulga, Fifth Avenue. I'd like to know first from the audience and City Council Mayor, how many of you ever walk in the city? Probably everybody, sometimes. Do any of you ever feel somewhat compromised when you're walking? Raise your hand, yeah, okay. And is the reason because of cars? Probably, probably. Okay, these are obviously pretty easy to answer, but same thing with biking, I'm pretty certain that if you have children, or if you have grandchildren, you might hesitate to let them ride bikes around in the city. If you have children, some of you are young, would you just let them take off on their bikes anytime? I'm going to say probably not. I wouldn't, I have grandchildren and I would hesitate. So we have a problem with too many cars, hashtag too many cars, and we're never going to have fewer as we continue development, as we continue to build, you know, more residences, and we have restaurants. More and more people are discovering Asbury Park all the time. So with that, knowing that cars are the problem, the fact is, it is true that this presentation, as dense as it is, really is driver-centric, it is not people-centric, it's not pedestrian-centric at all. And I don't even like to use the word pedestrian, because it kind of has a nasty connotation, these are people walking. So pedestrian, yeah, that's the terminology, but we all use our feet sometimes to get around, or roll around in the city sometimes. And if we feel compromised, and we feel like there are too many cars, and cars are, drivers are speeding, the focus needs to be, as Eric said, and Kathleen and Kathleen, all of us are saying the same thing, we need to have a vision for what the city can be, not just here's going to be, here's a bike lane, here's a green thing, here's a, you know, we're going to do this later, or we can't do this now, or the grant doesn't cover that, or here are all the grants that we've applied for. It needs to be a complete and comprehensive vision that the City Council and Advisory Committee that would be comprised of people who know things in the city about, they can be regular citizens or people who are experts in the city. Asbury Park Complete Streets Coalition is comprised of people who do know a lot, and would be a great asset to the city, to you, James. You're one person, I'm not even looking at my notes anymore, you're one person, and you're writing all those grants, I can't even imagine how you spend your days, I mean, it just, it's a lot. And with that thought, we need to consider getting a grant writer company or grant writer individual. I've checked out prices and found out that we could probably for $35,000 get a grant writing company contracted to be able to access many hundreds of thousands of dollars in funding, and take that onus off of you, even though you're good at it. You could be on the street, you could be implementing, you could be working on this vision that we're talking about. So I guess, maybe I should look at my notes, I do have questions too. Public input, the plan for walking, uh-oh. The plan for walking and biking was created with public input, and it was very active and very involved. It would be wonderful if you will consider, please, the Advisory Committee that you have said that you would, that you would offer, the Advisory Committee, including regular residents and people who know things in the city, people who understand design and streetscaping and, and safety, and who utilize the streets on a regular basis. I do have a question about the Complete Streets policy update that was, I guess, updated in April, which I didn't even know, did not include any input from anybody. I thought that it was still in process, can you explain that?
The policy was basically built off of the one that's, the template that the state provides.
I didn't hear what you said.
The, there's a state template for Complete Streets policies.
Right, I know that.
We took the one that we had existing and got as close to that one as possible. It's, you can't get exact because it's built for everybody, and sometimes things, something doesn't really apply, but we basically got as close to that template as we possibly There's, I don't know what else to cover.
Well, I thought you had said, long ago, that you were going to look for public input or an Advisory Committee to discuss the update of that.
Oh, you mean, oh, so there's.
Update of the policy.
There is, the plan, the policy calls for the development of a Complete Streets Advisory Committee, that's what you're referring to, right?
I guess, but it's already been adopted, and.
Yeah, no, the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, their purpose would be to oversee the implementation of Complete Streets, of the policy, not, not the adoption of the policy, the oversight of the policy being implemented on this city, yeah. So they would be reviewing like what I do every year and saying, okay, that's Complete Streets, why'd you exclude that, or whatever.
The policy, the update of the policy was adopted, but then you're going to bring in an Advisory Committee to implement.
Yeah, well, I'm implementing now, but yes, I have to, that's part of the implementation, that's one area of it.
Okay, next, I just want to ask quickly, you listed a ton of grants, are they all, have they been awarded, or have they been applied for?
Everything, I talked about, has been awarded, other than Langford Street, the canopies, those are the two that were pending, and then the Bangs Avenue one, we were denied.
Okay. When you described to me, we had, thank you for your conversations too on the phone, both of John and you, twice the other day, I really appreciate your time. We were talking about your pending projects. Pending sort of implies that there are things that are going to happen, but I think you also said this evening that those are things that you want to have happen, or you would like to have happen.
These are, when I say pending, because before, before there's implementation of any project that you see in this city, I'm putting in a lot of hours to get the data together, the strategy together, and a small plan. And I take that plan and I discuss it with the City Manager and with the Council. So I'm building those plans, building those, that information, to see if we can implement, if we want to implement, if we think it's going to help, where, that kind of information.
So that's, that's your expertise, that's a great thing, that's where the people that you're hearing from tonight can help you out, and maybe get you away from your desk in grant writing, so that we can work together to make some of these things happen. Is Main Street finished?
The DOT's reconstruction is done, the streetscape project is separate.
Are they gone?
Yeah, they're gone.
DOT is gone. Okay, so when Mike Manzella was here, we were talking about green, we're talking about green paint tonight, we're talking about painting the bike lanes on Main Street green back at that time, and also about bike boxes, you may or may not be familiar with the, the concept of a bike box, is at the end of a, a part of a city block where you're going to be possibly turning left on a bike, there's a box at the front of the stop area where cars would stop, for bikes to pull in, so that you can turn left. And this is something I talked about really in detail with Mike, well before he left. And since we're talking about green paint, let's get some on Main Street. You know, it does, does serve, it's only paint, but it does serve as a traffic calming measure, a slowing traffic, making the roadway seem more narrow, and also making it appear that bicycle riders will be here. And with that said, I just want to throw out there that many of you drive, I drive too, but it, I want drivers to know, anyone who ever drives and may not ride a bicycle, that it is not required that anybody has to be in a bike lane. Even if there is one, you don't have to use it, bicyclists are allowed to use the full lane. And there are signs that we have in the city that indicate that, some of them have been posted, and thank you. I'd like to see fewer of, a lot of other signs, but that's a good one. Get bicycles, may use full lane signs, you don't have to use a bike lane, even if there is one. You're actually sometimes safer out of the door zone. And the other thing is, there's the New Jersey State Four Foot Passing Law that is, was enacted in 2022, and almost nobody knows about it. It requires the drivers go very slowly behind anybody on a bike, and then pass with four feet clearance around them. And.
Of his poly?
I just want you to know, there's a sign for that.
No, I know, and.
I'll let you go, I just, some information I've done.
More than three minutes, but.
Thank you.
So if you have a specific question, James will answer.
That's, that's it, but thanks, and I hope that you guys are aware of that passing law.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the extra time.
Well, before I start, I'd like to have 12 minutes instead of three, that would be nice. But in any event, I'm Tom Pavinski from 1607 Emery Street, and I'm the Chair of the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, and I'm sure many of you are aware of the gardens along Wesley Lake. The reason I bring that up is because it's becoming increasingly dangerous for the volunteers, as well as for the many people who come to see the gardens, whether they're dog walkers or guests, or bicyclists, or walk, just walking. Because they're off the entrance from Ocean Grove into Emery, there is a large triangular garden called the Pollinator Garden, and they both have two long pathways that come off. The problem with the pathways is, they don't come off into anything that they could exit onto the street, they come off onto a curb. There are exits onto the street, but they're about six or seven feet away from where the pathways are. The pathways need to be restructured so that they can come down, because otherwise, what they do is, they zip right down the side of the garden on both sides, you can see the, the damage, erosion that they've done, and that has to be done rather soon. I'm impressed with all the kind of things that you're involved in and doing, but this is like an emergency now kind of project, because somebody is going to get hurt. Because we have loads of people who come with perambulators, we have children who walk by, we have old people who walk by, we have loads of people who come and comment on the gardens, and they say, we come here because we love the gardens. Well, I'm afraid one of us, or one of them, is going to get hit by a cyclist. And it's not because they're bad cyclists, it's because they, they don't have a decent pathway to go down. If they did, they would follow it. The walkers do, but the cyclists don't. And there are many, many people who come from Ocean Grove and elsewhere into Asbury Park, because this is the great place to come to. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Is that something we can look into as soon as possible?
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
I just want to, I want to add that the, they're not, bicycles are not supposed to be riding over that boardwalk, that bridge, we should be, we have to find a way, now we're looking into a way to better message that you cannot ride your bike over the bridge, because that is dangerous to come down that ramp, and the bridge is too narrow, there's no railing, that ramp is too much, so there's more.
If you're dreaming, don't even go there, that's handsense. You have to create the pathway, because those people are going to use it anyway.
Oh, then they're rocketing into the street.
So I think perhaps the sidewalk should be restructured. It's not a big deal, and if you have any connection with the DPW, like you do.
I can have a DPW reach out to you, Tom, so you can explain it to them and walk it with them.
They're sitting tired.
That's okay, I'll go with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jana Manning, 10 Deal A Court. Thank you, James, for the presentation, it was very comprehensive, was a lot to take in and be able to comment on, I agree with that. Wanted to just express, I guess my surprise, that after two years of discussions with various council members, and commitments to the idea of green infrastructure, it didn't appear anywhere in your presentation. I know others have said it, so I don't want to beat a dead horse, but apparently there's, there's interest in it, in having it. We're talking about all of these great ideas like bump outs, but to maximize the benefit of having a bump out, maybe there's green infrastructure underneath that. We've got stormwater issues, we need to take some of the pressure off of the lakes and start absorbing the pressure, the storm water throughout the city, not just sending it all to the lakes. So there's lots of opportunities, if we're doing bump outs, definitely consider whether or not there should be some infrastructure underneath to take in the water, and to get the water to the store, to the trees. So with green infrastructure, we can have a healthier tree canopy with more water support from stormwater, instead of the stormwater racing along the curb, away from the tree, let it get to the trees, let it get in the soil there, let it take in that water, have it do some good, as opposed, and have the water get filtered through the soil, as opposed to polluting the lakes. And, and also, those bump outs and green infrastructure, it's cooling and cleaning the air, providing nature for everybody's mental health, and, and support their mental health. So in, in discussing that, green infrastructure has been a topic for, for two years now. I wonder what it is that we can do to make it more official. Didn't seem to reach you, James, I'm sorry. But I guess my question is, how does that become something that becomes a mandate for whoever's planning our roadwork, that we're not always trying to catch up to roadwork afterwards, and say, wait, can we, can we get into that project here? Can we, can we look at an opportunity to address some flooding through green infrastructure? How does that become, how does that become standard operating procedure? What do we need to do to get there? And, and then also, with Polly just asking about the Complete Streets policy, and hearing that it was adopted, but that those interested parties, and maybe there are task force or committee, I don't know, but that they will be responsible for, for making sure that there's compliance, but they weren't responsible for defining the policy. Seems very odd to me. So I hope that doesn't happen if we do move into green infrastructure policy setting, that we're involved in policy setting and not just being given a policy and told to abide by it.
The green infrastructure is going to happen. If it's been two years, a year and a half, whatever, since it's become a buzzword, we've given out those street projects since then. So, but it's been explained to the engineer by Eileen many times, by the rest of the council, any future road programs that we're funding, and we're asking the state for money, green infrastructure has to be part of the process. So the next project you see a road being done, I mean, like Eighth Avenue, you know, we got the money three years ago, and some of the roads, Memorial Drive, once you go out to bid, it's tough to change it if you don't have the money. Green infrastructure will be part of every road project from here on out.
And, and having the connection, now, Jana, you and I are going to do a walkthrough with James, will get in the queue for projects that are now upcoming, and be able to add green infrastructure to these projects before they go out to bid.
Yeah, it should be the design process, right? There should be input on the design process. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Diana Patel, 321 Sunset Avenue, and, James, I'm a member of the Green Team, and so looking forward to talking with you, collaborating with you in September, and finding ways to implement green infrastructure, and finding ways to encourage non-polluting ways of getting around our city. I have two bike-centric questions. Number one is, as we are trying to create and make more apparent and clear the bike lanes, is there also a move to put in more bike racks? I mean, just look outside here, that all of us who bike here have to find a way to like put our bikes locked to a street sign or something like that, it'd be great to get more bike racks, especially in plots that are key places in the city, like the post office here, elsewhere. And then my second bike question is, excuse my ignorance, but who's in charge of, who's, and who's charge is the Norwood Bridge, the Norwood Avenue Bridge that comes into Park Avenue? And, sorry? There's a state road, yeah, because I wouldn't say that's definitely a pain point crossing over there by bicycle. I don't know if that was discussed tonight, because confession, I did miss most of the meeting, because there's really not an obvious way to bike safely over it.
Unfortunately, that bridge is a state bridge, and we don't have much input on it. But as far as bike racks, yes, we are interested in putting more bike racks out. We, we have a grant that we'll be doing some downtown and down the train station, including lockers. I would love to expand that to other areas of the city with either corrals or something else. I think that's very useful, I mean, if you look anywhere, you're going to see a lot of trees and bikes on them. I even bought a few extra for the waterfront this year, and placed them around the waterfront for the beachgoers. But yes, we do need some permanently installed, new bike racks in other locations in the city.
Great, and that would be a great thing, that if there's going to be more public comment, have people may put X's on maps where they think more bike racks should go, and especially spots actually inland, as opposed to just on the boardwalk too.
Sure, we can easily do that, even online or in a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Make a motion to close. Oh, Rita, I'm sorry. Sorry, Rita.
All right. Rita Miranda, Eighth Avenue. I think James is doing a good job, there's too much scribble in the streets. I mean, you don't need all those signs up neither. You have six signs the same from the bridge, coming over the bridge, from Allenhurst to Sixth Avenue. That's too many with the same writing. Look at Spring Lake, they don't even have one sign up. Why do we have to have all those? Well, there's a reason. But first, I want to talk about the firehouse. I was looking at being, you're having so many overruns, I got interested in it, because they got the lowest bid of all. So how do we have all these overruns now for the firehouse? Are we building the Taj Mahal or something? What's going on here? I mean, they, they're going to have an elevator for a two-story building? I mean, I love the fire. I mean, I love the fire people, I think they're great. But, they're supposed to be physically fit. They don't need an elevator. I have a chair climber in my house, and he's very slow. And that's the way elevators are. But aside from that, I think you better look at the Wallace Brothers. We had problems with them once before. I don't, I didn't read their contract, but does it say that they can't have overruns? Or shouldn't it say that? You're going to buy a door, and you borrowed money to buy a door for that firehouse, $1.6 million. Are you kidding me? What's going on here? Kind of a door is it? Why doesn't the firehouse have a door in the contract? And I'd like to know who wrote that contract. Was it the engineer? Because the engineer knows a lot of people, including the Wallace Brothers. Did he leave them out purposely, or what, what's going on? It's not even up yet, it's just a thin frame. And you have 10 overruns. What's that going to be like in the end, with the overruns? But anyway, I want to get back to James. James, one of your problems is, that those that sit on the Planning and Zoning Board don't provide enough parking for all these people that are moving in. My recommendation would be, and I know it's real dramatic, is to stop redevelopment. It doesn't help us. This man was saying how much his taxes went up. My taxes went up, too. What are we benefiting from all this? Nothing but traffic. It's not right. They either have to have two spaces for every car, not one and a half, I don't know where that half comes in, but it's wrong. They should have two spaces for two cars, or if they have three cars. It's not like years ago, when nobody had a car, they had one car in the family, and come down by train. It's very different now. Everybody has a car. But you have to do something about that. You can't have all this traffic, and you should see my block, Eighth Avenue. Five houses on one side of the street. You can't even move on that street, because there's a tent family right across the street from me, and they don't have enough parking. And then the other thing is, people now are really feeling the recession, or whatever you want to call it. I won't call it a depression, because I know what that's about. But, anyway, a recession. People are moving in with other people. And I'll just give you one example. Across the street from me, there was a man that moved in with his two children, about six or seven years ago. Well, now, they're all grown. He had a motorcycle, now his son has a motorcycle, and there's no room to park where he lives. So where are motorcycles? With a car, his father has a car, and two motorcycles right behind him, parking in front of my house, because there's no parking in his house. That's not right. I don't pay all those taxes, next to me is paying $25,000 in taxes. The one after that is paying $31,000. What, I mean, where are we going? We're not Deal, New Jersey, are we? I don't know.
Okay, Rita.
All right, but I just want to say, people are moving in with each other, and you don't even know it.
Well, if you see something wrong, report it to us, and we'll investigate it.
I'll be on the phone all day, and nobody answers.
You can call my house, Rita. As far as like, the firehouse, I'm going to be wrong on the exact number, because there's been very few change orders. A change order is something that was added to the project because something happened. The two or three change orders were because of county regulations, because of county road, everything else. There have been, you call it overruns, I can't think of the proper wording, because the past administration, the city manager, the fire chief, and the IT person said, "We can do this cheaper in-house." So, be it the door locks, they're doing that in-house, instead of putting it out to bid, because we could do it at a cheaper price. That money was built into the budget, so it's not money being added to the budget of the firehouse. So, what you're calling the overruns, there have been more overruns than change orders, and the change orders are because of directions from the county, as far as parking and other things. Fred, correct me if I'm wrong.
I correct me.
And since you bought land, too, and some of the stuff I got, did we have to buy something?
We bought no land for the firehouse.
Did?
We did not.
Oh. Where did you buy it?
We didn't, we owned it.
Well, so, there was a price on it, in the paperwork I got.
Well, you can show it to us, but we paid no money for any land for the firehouse. Thank you. Motion to close?
All in favor?
Aye.
Public dispassion portion is now closed. We're now on to the minutes, the executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of July 31st. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 2024-384, Resolution approving payment of bills. Second. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2024-385, Resolution approving special event applications.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-387, Resolution authorizing the purchase of various computers and accessories needed for citywide computer replacement.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-388, Resolution authorizing the purchase of access control security system at various locations citywide.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-389, Resolution authorizing payment to the Boys and Girls Club of Monmouth for public facility upgrades through community development block grant funds.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-390, Resolution authorizing payment to the Mercy Center for public facility upgrades through community development block grant funding.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-391, Resolution authorizing payment to Community Affairs Resource Center for public facility upgrade through community development block grant funds.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-392, Resolution authorizing payment to UFBC Man of Pantry for public facility upgrade through community development block grant funding.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson. Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-393, Resolution authorizing fiber cable installation at the new fire department headquarters.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore.
I should have said a question before the vote. My question is rhetorical. Rita, this is not a change order, this is something that was designed to do it cheaper in-house, so I vote yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2024-394, Resolution authorizing annual services agreement with Power DMS for police department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-395, Resolution amending a shared services agreement with Passaic Valley Sewerage Commission for sludge disposal.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-396, Resolution approving change order number one for 2022 roadway improvement program.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-397, Resolution awarding bid for Asbury Avenue bikeway improvements.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-398, Resolution authorizing the mayor and city council to execute a discharge of mortgage for Melvin and Barbara Daniels, her property located at 1308 Fourth Avenue, Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-399, Resolution amending Resolution number 2024-337, approving the 2024-2025 alcohol beverage control license for the House of Independence LLC in the city of Asbury Park, the county of Monmouth, and state of New Jersey.